Okay, it is 7:00 PM. I am going to call the meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. I am President Lauren Christensen. Welcome to our one and only meeting in December. I'm happy to see such a full crowd of people here this evening. I'm going to start to my right with Member.
Good evening. My name is Anupam Chuksedu. Thanks for being here.
I'm Judy Westra. Thank you for coming out tonight.
I'm Cheryl Picard, and welcome, everybody.
Amenah Ahmed, welcome.
And our student co-chairs.
Josh Patterson, SVA co-chair and Plymouth junior. Good to see you all tonight.
Hi, everyone. Sayu Puar, senior at Canton High School as well as an SVA student co-chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Dr. Merritt, can you introduce yourself and your team?
Yes. Good evening, Superintendent Merritt, and welcome. It's so great to see everybody here on this holiday season. I'd like to begin by introducing my lovely assistant, who has everybody's back here at this table to ensure that we run these meetings efficiently and effectively, Ms. Diane Robertson. I also like to thank Mr. John Krieger, now back there, who is becoming the newest voice of Plymouth Canton Community Schools. We're hearing him across the airways. He takes care of our technology needs, but the work, I'm just going to just give a shout out to that communications department with our reels and just amplifying the great work our students are doing each and every day, and he's really leading that work, and we appreciate him for that. I'd like to ask the remaining members of the team to introduce themselves to you.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Kurt Tiskowitz, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Jill Minnick, I serve as CFOO. Welcome.
Good evening, Beth Rail, Chief Academic and Innovation Officer. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Good evening, Abdul Matiun, Chief Human Resource Officer.
Welcome, everyone. Liz Vartanian Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent Student Family Engagement. Thank you. Let's stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are on to adoption of the agenda and the approval of the consent agenda. Can I please have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we adopt the agenda, approve the consent agenda, action item number 25-12-36.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Sounds like everybody did, but what I heard first, it was moved by Secretary, or you're not Secretaries to do anymore, sorry, trustees to do, and seconded by Member Picard. Oh, my gosh, I'm so sorry, everybody. I swear it'll get better as we get going. Dr. Merritt, can you please take us through the consent agenda?
Absolutely. President Christensen, this evening, our consent agenda consists of human resources transactions. Since our last time together, our Human Resources Department has been busy hiring champions for our district. We also had some resignations, as well as the approval of minutes. This is from our regular meeting on November the 26th, and we have a few out-of-country field trips that were discussed during the spot.
Great. All right. I'm going to call for the vote. Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries 5-0. Mr. Maydum, can you take us through Human Resources?
Yes, thank you. We have four new hires that I would like, if you are, when I mention your name, if you are in the audience, please stand. We have something sweet for you. Christopher Camilleri, who is, oh, he is here. He is being hired as the new supervisor for the Center Based ASD Program. James Herman, he has been hired as a computer tech, computer tech department. Genaviva Pedoprin Hayes.
She said she's not here.
She's not here. Okay. She is being hired as a new accounting specialist in payroll, and I know Jill makes Jill very happy to have a full staff getting there. And last but not least, is Kristelle Russell-Lund-Jatovo, who is being hired as the new curriculum coordinator for Science, STEM, and PE. Can we give them a round of applause? Now we'll go take them their sweet treats.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are on to celebrating success. Dr. Merritt.
Yes, this evening, we'd like to end this, I'm going to say, calendar year in the same way that we began the calendar year in January, where we recognized through a press release, our own very bird elementary teacher, Ms. Pam Morgan. She was selected as the VFW's 2024 Teacher of the Year in January of 2024. If you know Pam, you know that she has a great impact that is felt across generations of students. That's right, that's right. And families, they volunteer in her classroom. She inspires her students with her innovative social studies lessons, including her field trips to the Plymouth Veterans Park. So recently, we had our VFF's former commander, Joe Tebow, and he asked if he could present Pam with a plaque along with one of his representatives here, so I want to invite them to the microphone to share their thoughts on Ms. Morgan and her remarkable.
First of all, thank you for the opportunity to recognize one of your own, who's a very outstanding teacher. I want to introduce a few people that we have with me. Over here, Kathy Briotta is the president of our auxiliary, and Sherry Ades is chairperson for our Teacher of the Year, Voice of Democracy, and Patriot Pen Programs. Okay? Briefly discuss those, but time right here. The VFW started recognizing teachers nationwide in 1999. That was the first one. Our purpose is to recognize teachers who present themselves in a patriotic manner throughout the year and promote patriotic and civic-minded awareness to their students. There's a number of ways they can do this. Everyone's different. But we have, we start at the post level. They submit their application to the post. Now, a teacher can nominate themselves. They can be nominated by the principal, another teacher, a parent, a student. Anyone can nominate someone for this position, and it's a pretty good award. Anyway, the award is presented, I mean, not the award yet, nomination paperwork is submitted to the post, any VFW post, and there are about 250 throughout the state of Michigan. We have a post competition. We select a post winner. The winner of our post is submitted to our district, and District Four includes all of Wayne County. Okay? The district winner is then submitted to the Department of Michigan, our state level in Lansing, and that is what Pam won. She won at our post level, she won at our district level, and she is the State Teacher of the Year. I want to present this certificate that was signed by our state commander, or national commander, I should say. It's for the year 2023 to 2024, and our year goes from one May of one year to 30 April of the following year. It's not an official year. Okay? This is the Smart Mayor VFW National Citizenship Education Teacher Award. The award is presented to Pamela Morgan, Bird Elementary School, Plymouth, Michigan, in recognition of being selected the State VFW Smart Mayor Teacher Award winner for citizenship and education. And witness thereof, we have here on two, Sedar Hand and the official seal of Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States. Signed, Dwayne Sarmiento, Commander in Chief, and Dan West, our Adjutant General. And we're not done.
The auxiliary and the VFW would like to present Pam, as a token of our appreciation, a check, a monetary award, to show how much we appreciate all that she has done for veterans and all that she teaches her children. I am here to tell you that of all the years, I've been doing this for seven years now, nobody has represented the VFW and Plymouth schools better than Pam. She is absolutely outstanding, and it's fitting that we give her this tonight on her birthday.
I just want to say a few words. I'm a veteran teacher myself, been around a long time. I'm a Plymouth Canton graduate, but the most important thing to me to share with my students is the love of my country. It's so important to teach patriotism to our students today, and Joe Tebow is such a pillar of that. He served in the Vietnam War. He distributed propaganda. He served our country for 21 years, and I think he deserves a round of applause. I want to thank my students, who are kindergartners. I've taught first grade for over 30 years, and this year I'm teaching kindergarten. I can't think of a better thing to teach new kids coming into Plymouth Canton schools than about patriotism. And I want to thank my parents that brought their students here. It means so much. And to Dr. Wagner, for being here, our student support coordinator. But I want to speak to you, board. I'm inviting you to come in May down to the Veterans Park, where it's a history lesson in making, and I'm going to ask Mr. Kevin Carr to kind of come along with us and see what students in our district can learn from that park. I don't think people go there or know about it. And I also want to talk to our curriculum directors about our writing. We're giving away $35,000 scholarships to students, and none of our Plymouth Canton students are applying for these. We're getting a lot of charter kids and private kids. Why not write about democracy in a writing class in Plymouth Canton schools? Why not make that an assignment and future our students to a better education that's paid for? Because these veterans do a lot, all year long, raising money for scholarships. They can start at eighth grade.
Sixth grade?
Sixth grade.
Sixth grade. And it's a considerable amount of money. At the convention that I was able to celebrate, there were students there that were awarded over $35,000, and to listen to their essays about democracy were heartwarming. So I encourage you to embrace our city, use it wisely, and engage our students. And I'm just so proud to be the VFW Teacher of the Year, and I'm excited to bring my kindergartners there, and they know that when we say the pledge every day, we stand up straight, we're learning what our right hand is, and they're amazing, and they're proud to be an American. So thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
I just want to thank you two, coming from the auxiliary. I hope that you take this back with you, what she said about the scholarships from sixth to eighth grade and then high school. There's two different categories. Job mentioned that we have.
Patriots.
Patriots. I lost my, Patriots Pen and Voice of Democracy are two different groups, and they give them a theme, and they write on that theme, and then it goes through all the different areas, district, state, and national. So please take it back.
Just a few comments. There are over 800, or no, about 1,080 or so teachers in this district and over 18,000 students, and this year, we received zero applicants for Teacher of the Year, and only a total of five, two Voice of Democracy and three Patriot Pen entries. And the two Voice of Democracy came from private schools, charter schools, I guess. Anyway, there's a $35,000 scholarship available for the high school students, ninth through 12th. They are given a theme designated by the national commander, and it's always a patriotic theme, and they have very stringent rules. There's a time limit on their speech. They can't exceed, I think it's three minutes, might be five, yeah, five, it's been extended. And if they extend five words beyond that, they're disqualified. If they identify themselves, or what post they're representing, or if they're the daughter or granddaughter of a VFW member by any means that can identify them, they're disqualified. Okay? And then the oral, the, yeah, the oral presentation, or written, written presentation by the middle school students, sixth through eighth grade, there's a $5,000 scholarship availability at the national level, and they can get additional scholarships starting at the post. We pay our winners, I think, what, 200 for the Voice of Democracy? And district pays another amount to the winner, the state pays more, and then the national is the one that pays the most. Now, there is over a million dollars in scholarships total given out every year. There are approximately 68,000 students every year that apply for the Patriot Pen Award. Plymouth needs to take advantage of that. Teachers need to make their students aware of these programs. Parents, now that you're listening to this, make sure your student applies next year, okay? It'll help you financially. I couldn't have gone to college without a scholarship. Paid for everything. Okay? I just want to thank you for the opportunity to recognize Pam. We both live in Levonia. We didn't know that until we met. I didn't meet Pam until the night she was given the award. I happen to be lucky enough to be assigned to the same table that all three of our Teacher of the Years came from, and two of them came from our district. So we're fortunate in that. And it's the first time, I think, our post has had a state winner, so we're proud of that back too. And just one side thing, Pam mentioned that I was in propaganda, okay? I was in propaganda. I donated my collection of Vietnam War propaganda leaflets and other psyop materials to the National Vietnam War Museum two years ago. It's down in Texas. It's still sitting in a warehouse because they're doing phase two now. But I am available to any of your history teachers, psych teachers, psychology, whatever. I have some amazing things. There's a leaflet that's been in a jar of water since 2015. You can still read it. The paper has not been deteriorated, and you can't tear it if you take it out of that jar. And this was developed back in 1960s. Okay? That's just one item I have. But anyway, I'm available. I want to get the word out, because this was a very highly classified project. Nobody, not even our own soldier, our Vietnam veterans, didn't know all this was going on. And I had the opportunity, as a first lieutenant, I selected every target for the entire last year of the war, where we dropped a Vietnamese-language propaganda leaflet throughout all of Southeast Asia, including North Vietnam, South Vietnam, Cambodia, and Laos. And that was a high responsibility for a first lieutenant. Okay? But anyway, I just want to make that available at your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be off to run because I have another meeting to go right now.
I just have to introduce Jody Ring. Jody also is a former chief or both chiefs, and she's my facilitator. She coordinates all the veterans from different services, and they come to the park, and we share the love of the park and teach them about folding of the flag, and then we go have ice cream at the Dairy King. And it's such a great exchange, and I just want to thank her for the last 10 years for making sure that those veterans attend, and the relationship that we've built with our veterans and Jody is just over-the-top amazing. So thank you, Jody.
You're welcome. All right. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Ms. Morgan, and happy birthday. Okay, we are moving on to the next section of our celebrating success with Member Amen.
This is a weird angle, anyways. Good evening. The Board of Education is honored to present the VIP Volunteer in Public Schools Award to Mr. Mike Hurley, affectionately known as Papa Mike. Papa Mike has devoted his life to education, and even in retirement, he continues to give back to the community with immense compassion. As a former teacher and principal, he shaped the lives of many students, and today, he volunteers at Hoben Elementary School. There, he reads to students, helping them develop a love for literature and inspiring a sense of wonder. What makes Papa Mike truly special is his ability to connect with students and make them feel valued. His kindness, patience, and encouragement have a lasting impact, and his presence continues to inspire and uplift the children he works with, leaving a legacy of love for learning and community. A very special thank you to Mike Hurley for the amazing bonus he sent our way, his daughter, Jennifer Chambers, the incredible principal at Helsing Elementary School, who's here tonight to honor her amazing father. Looks like Mike's got a knack for giving us the best gifts. At this time, I'd like to invite Elizabeth Reader, second-grade teacher at Hoben, to share her thoughts on Mike Hurley and his exceptional contributions, as she was the one to nominate him for this special award. We also welcome anyone else who wishes to offer remarks on his impact.
I have to give you a big hug.
Oh, of course. Thank you.
So I wrote that on behalf of you, because for eight years, Papa Mike has been coming to Hoben, and even though I didn't have Robbie in second grade, Papa Mike started to come, and he doesn't stay for just an hour. Papa Mike literally works the day like a teacher all day. He comes first thing in the morning. He works with us to read stories that he purposely picks for the week of our SEL lessons, and he shares his wisdom, his courage, all of his wealth of knowledge with our second-grade students, our most needed students, and literally the whole life of Hoben Elementary School. He has this tiny little lunchbox that is the shape of the train, and instead of coming into the teacher's lounge to take a little break for 50 minutes of a duty-free lunch, he goes into the cafeteria and sits with students on top of reading.
Yeah, he does.
And we also will come outside and do our second afternoon recess duty, and in my class, he's become the jump rope holder, and the kids just love you, and I love having you in my classroom and sharing you with all of the teachers and children at Hoben. And we just celebrated Papa Mike's 80th birthday, and we had a whole school celebration. And Jen, I'm really sorry, but that he doesn't come to Helsing because.
No, he's been there for like four times.
Okay, four times. Eight years, eight years. And just recently, he told me, he's like, coming to your classroom is like taking a vitamin a day. So I just want to say thank you for being my motivation and my drive to help me in my career as I continue on with teaching, and I did go back to school too, to get my MED in literacy with a little help from Papa Mike and his motivation, so.
Thank you so much.
And I love you.
Well, I have to say, I want to thank Mrs. Reader for nominating me. I didn't expect that. Of course, my birthday celebration was on the actual day of my birthday, so when I came up from the parking lot, they have this nice banner out front, you know, and everything. Totally unexpected, but totally appreciated. They do so much for me and make me feel so great. You know, I was in education for almost 45 years, and I just love every moment of it. And I tell people, once you get in that, in a job like that, you can't get out of it. You've got to be with kids. You've got to help them out. And so when Robbie started kindergarten, I started working with Maureen Visser, and I loved Maureen. She was wonderful. I went on to first grade with Debbie Erickson, and then from there, I think last Thursday, I probably read to seven classrooms. So I picked up a few more along the way, through requests, of course. So kindergarten, young fives in second grade, and pretty much other grades that I worked with. But I just love it, and I love Hoben, and Hoben is a great school. And I love Helsing too. I do love Helsing too, and, you know, I have visited, and probably come over there now that they're getting the therapy dogs, I'm explaining, because I love dogs too. But it's just been, it's just been a pleasure there. And I told them the other day, as long as I got two feet on the ground, I'm going to keep coming. You know, it's just something I like to do. Gives me a nice break during the week to come over there and work with kids, and I love to read to them. So, you know, it's just something that I just want to continue doing as much as I can, and as long as they want me, as long as they'll have me. So I would like to introduce my wife, Judy. She is a retired teacher also, and then my, of course, we met Jennifer. My other daughter is Kristen, Kristen Jason. She works at the Career Technical Center in Wayne Westland. She's a, she was a counselor, and now she's got a job over there. And her, my granddaughter Stella, and then there's Robbie, sitting next to Jen. And then I have my son Chris and his wife Kim over there. So I want to thank them for coming, and then, of course, the Hoben staff. They're just great, and they just treat me so well, you know? I mean, they're always doing something for me, so.
We dress them too.
Yeah. You know, they give me nice little presents every once in a while, so, yes, it's just a, it's just a lot of fun. And, but, you know, I couldn't do it without the great staff I work with, and that's, that's an important thing, too. And they care so much for kids. It's just evident all around that school. If you go in that school and you see all the things on the walls and all the student work and all the things that they do, it's just amazing. So I really appreciate all of the help they give me and making my day a great day, and again, thank them for welcoming, welcoming me into their school. I just want to thank you so much.
You're our family.
I can't beat that, but. On behalf of the Board of Education, it's an honor to present the Volunteer in Public Schools VIP Award to Mr. Mike Hurley. This award celebrates its outstanding dedication to the students and staff at Plymouth Canton Community Schools. And if you could please follow Dr. Liz Vartanian Gibbs to the hallway for photos, and thank you, everyone, for coming. I love the letters. Thank you so much.
That is a hard act to follow, I will say. My heart is full, and it's hard to continue on, but I am going to move on to the next section of our agenda, beginning with the president's report. I have a few things that I want to discuss tonight, just acknowledging that we're in, you know, the middle of December, and we're preparing for this upcoming winter break, some much-needed time off for students and staff. So I just want to encourage everyone to take this time to rest, rejuvenate, and cherish the moments with loved ones, whether you celebrate holidays during this time or just simply enjoy the quieter moments of this, the winter months. I hope this break provides you with peace and joy, and to our students and staff, a much-needed opportunity to sleep in. I also wanted to take this time to acknowledge the end of Vice President Patty McCoyn's term on the school board. A few words here, and then we have a video to share too with the group. Unfortunately, Member McCoyn is unable to attend this evening's meeting. However, I'd like to say a few words, recognizing her time as a valued board member. I want to express my heartfelt gratitude for Patty's dedication and service to our schools and our community. Her contributions over the past eight years have left lasting impact on our district, and we're truly fortunate to have had the benefit of her leadership. Patty is a wealth of knowledge and expertise, and that has been invaluable in guiding the board through critical decisions and initiatives. She consistently demonstrates a deep commitment to the success of our students, our staff, and our schools, and her voice on the board has been one of wisdom and integrity. I'll never forget Patty's mantra throughout our boardwork together. She would always say, "Need I remind you that our kids only get one shot and one experience and one experience at school, and we have to get this right?" She's a fierce advocate for our students, and I will carry this with me as I continue on boardwork. At this time, I would like us to play the video that Members Sedu so nicely compiled for Member McCoyn. I'd also like to invite anyone who wants to make any additional comments about Patty and her tenure here with the school board. Anyone want to say anything?
This is hard for me. Patty has been a partner, a friend, a mentor, and I could not have done this without her. Anytime I had a question, I could call her up, and she spent endless time with me understanding the history of what went wrong in 1995 or where was the pool in 2001 in Plymouth. The history, the knowledge, the dedication she has for this community is going to be something that I will miss and I think we will all miss. I can't tell you how much she cared about this work. She put her heart and soul into this work. She read everything. She understood everything. So if any of us ever had a question, we could call her up, and she never said no. She was gracious with her time. And the one thing that I would always carry with me is she looked out for the kids. She always wanted to make sure that every kid had a safe space, a sense of belonging, felt included in every part of this district. And that is a legacy that she will leave behind and I hope that we can carry on some of that work in honoring her. So thank you, Patty McCoyn, and I wish her all the best.
I don't think I'll be as eloquent as Anupam will be. I echo a lot of what she said. I really appreciate Patty's wisdom and depth of knowledge about the district and about the community and about the teacher, about being a teacher. I think having her knowledge as a teacher on the board was critical. I ran for my seat with her, or I'm sorry, when she was a candidate also. And she was incredibly generous during my coming to understand what it really means to be on the board. She was incredibly generous with her time and passion and explaining what it really means to be a school board member. And I value all of the dedication that she showed to the kids. And as several people have alluded to, the constant drumbeat of, "Our kids only get one shot." We have to get this right for the kids, so.
It was really apparent that Patty was very dedicated. I know there were some things we disagreed on, but she was always, I mean, we disagree to disagree. But her dedication was very apparent. And that her heart showed through that. And I just wish the best for her, whatever she gets involved in, so.
This is really emotional for me because I feel like I associate Patty McCoyn with PCCS way before even starting to serve on a committee. Often, if you came to a school board meeting, which I came to just as a curious parent and community member, the one person you would consistently find attending the meeting was Patty McCoyn. And if you missed a meeting, she would fill you in. She was there taking notes. She wasn't just, you know, she wasn't multitasking and doing other things. And I was really grateful when she was elected to the board because I knew that she would look out for my kids and all the kids in the community, and she truly did that. She was a board member who was accessible. And what I loved was, if you saw Patty at a community event, it wasn't just the grownups talking to her. It was the kids. And if you watch videos of the school graduation ceremonies, you can see that. You can see kids being excited when it's Patty handing them their diploma because of the commitment and the connection that she had. It's a huge loss in terms of institutional knowledge on the board and commitment. I really appreciate how she mentored me during my time on the policy committee. And I just, I wish her the best, but I'll really, really miss her on the board. Thank you, Patty.
I appreciate everybody's kind words from my board colleagues, so thank you for that.
If I can just share a few words?
Oh, sure, sure, if you would like to. I'm sorry, I thought you wanted to do that during your part.
I should jump in right on down.
Sure, Dr. Merritt, please.
Absolutely. So I'm just listening to all of the stories about Patty and my own reflection, thinking about when I first came to the district in 2011 and having Patty as a community member who was at every single meeting and then joining the board. And just when I hear about her preparation, there's not a meeting that she wasn't fully prepared for. The story and the knowledge that she shares, the fierce advocacy for students, which is something that I will never forget. When we think about all of the decisions that we make wanting to have students at the center, and at times, as we as adults sometimes, get off track. And she was a constant reminder to keep students at the center. When we think about all of our lives, if we can put into one word what we want to be remembered for, I heard you say legacy. And I just think about the legacy of excellence that she has left for students in this district. We talk about our different committee work here on the board, and sometimes we say, you know, "This committee is more fun than that committee." When you think about policy, it's not the fun stuff, right? But it's the work that you do that impacts generations for years and years to come in students in our school community. So we are thankful for you, Patty McCoyn. On behalf of the district for your eight years of service, we will get this plaque to you. Such a beautiful tribute in that video to just continue to elevate her legacy. So we thank you for her service.
That concludes my President's Reports. Thank you. Okay, on to Student Performance and Achievement Committee. We'll go with Secretary Westra.
Thank you. We last met on December 4th at 5:00 p.m. In our last meeting, we covered both the high school program highlights and which we will see tonight in tonight's board meeting, and also the Fall Panorama Survey for 2024 and 2025, which we will see in our meeting in January. We also, both discussions were excellent. Both presentations were excellent. I was happy, you know, very, very happy with the presentations and the level of discussion that we had around them. We also discussed the SPA committee member, and I'd like to open an invitation to our community. Every year, or every two years, we have interviews for community members. We like to have community voice on our committees, and we can have up to three committee members. The period is coming up in January for the next round of interviews, and we hope that we will see many people apply and come to the SPA committee. It's a lot of fun. Our next meeting will be on January 8th next year at 5:00 p.m. in this room. And they are open to the public, and we welcome everybody to come.
Thank you very much. On to the Policy Committee with Members Sedu.
Thank you, President Christensen. We met today, earlier today, right before the meeting. We went through our timeline of all the old policies that have gone through first and second read and where some are at a standstill. We, for our business, reviewed policy 6320, which is purchasing. This came out of a conversation that we had at the board table where Treasurer Kehoe asked about a purchasing policy to be reviewed. So we've done that. We talked about it. Now I will send it back to Treasurer Kehoe and President Christensen, since they both serve on finance and operations, to see if that language is clear and if that captures some of the things that you had wanted. The next policy was employment of personnel and co-curricular activities. We expanded this language to include new state requirements. So as you know, policy, we have to make sure that every policy gets updated as laws get changed or as new requirements come on board. So that was added. Next one was student accidents. This was also updated based on state law, and we decided to expand that to include student safety. But remember, these are first reads, and we go through another read at the next meeting, so we kind of flesh this out before it comes to the board table. And they also get two reads. The other one was small unmanned aircraft systems, i.e. drones. We had a robust conversation about this in terms of how flexible do we want this to be to make sure that students have access to drones, given that there's a lot of programming that happens with drones? So I appreciate Josh's experience with drones and programming and his insight to make sure that we have a safe space for students to explore under the supervision of staff. The last policy we discussed today was criminal justice information security. This was really dense in terms of all of the systems that we need to protect from every aspect. So we are going to take another look at this. And by the way, all of this is online. If you go to the Plymouth Canton website, look at policy, the entire agenda and all of the information is there for you to read through. And our next meeting is Tuesday, January 28th, 5:30 p.m. down the hall. Hope all of you can attend. And as Member Westra said, we are also looking at new community members. So if you're interested, please send a letter of intent, and then we will be doing interviews in January. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, on to Finance and Operations Committee. I will share a summary of what we discussed at our last meeting this past Thursday, December 5th. We reviewed a 2024-25 bus purchase recommendation, which is on the agenda this evening. We also reviewed the financial reports through October 31st of this year. And then we also had a discussion around the community subcommittee membership. And like both my board colleagues over here had mentioned, we are soliciting letters of intent for our membership of our committee as well. You can submit that. Well, actually, we should be posting that to our Board of Ed website, so that will be up very shortly. And we'll be taking applications through January.
Through the end of January?
So in our discussion during Finance and Operations, I think all of our committees really should be aligned. Just because we're getting so close and compressed to the holiday break or the winter break, we were thinking of expanding that to, or extending that to January to allow people the time to make that consideration and submit that application. So through January, and then we can... Each committee will decide when they are able to interview those applicants. Okay. All right. On to Student Voice in Action Committee with Saiyee and Josh.
Thank you.
You know what, I'm sorry. Can I, I forgot, I failed to mention when the next EPO meeting is. So that's December 19th in this room at 5:00 p.m. All are welcome. Thank you. Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. Student Voice in Action has not met since our last meeting, but subcommittee work has occurred along with SVA students attending other board subcommittee meetings.
And then our next SVA meeting will be on December 16th at 4:30 in the Discover AudioT area. Hope to see you all there.
And like we mentioned for the three other committees, we are also soliciting community membership for SVA as well. So we hope you put your name in. We welcome you to join. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so now we are on to Administrative Reports and Recommendations. Dr. Merritt.
All right, thank you, President Christensen. I'm going to keep my comments brief this evening because I want to share my time with one of our powerful partners that you'll hear a little bit about in a few minutes. But first, I just had to shout out our team. You know, I can never miss an opportunity to brag about our amazing students. The PCCS esports team, they competed at the recent Michigan High School Esports League's playoff. I think it was at MSU, yes. And they came in number two from the state in terms of over, I think, 100 students competed. And if you know, we're new in terms of our esports program. This is just our second year. And to actually come up in second place across the state, we are so incredibly proud of this team. Team member Luke Meyer was also named as an Ultimate All-State Award winner for his efforts. We want to thank Mr. Eddie Lee, who is their sponsor. We want to thank all of the support that we have for our young people. And congratulations again to the Plymouth Esports Team members on their hard work this season in growing this competitive video game community. So please join me in... And since this is our final meeting before this holiday season, I too want to take that opportunity to just say to everyone, I am grateful for you. What an incredible year it has been. And I say calendar year because we're only halfway through the school year. And we have so much to be proud of. We have such a truly special district. Our kids are amazing. Our staff is amazing. Our facilities are getting better. And our goal is to make sure that they reflect the incredible excellence that's going on within our buildings each and every day. So I am grateful for everyone. I ask and implore you all to take a pause, to spend time during this break with your loved ones because that's so important to recharge, however you celebrate the holiday season. I'm going to direct every one of our 2,000-plus staff members to put your "Out of Office" on your email. You're hearing it from me. It's okay to do that. We will close for business at the end of the day on December 20th, and we will open up on January 6th. And I am so excited that we will all come back ready for the second half of the school year. As we move into this final conversation, as happy as the holidays can be, they can also be a time of stress. And here in Plymouth Canton, we always have a priority, our students' and our staff's mental health. We continue to do important work to remove the stigma of talking about mental health. And we began a powerful partnership with six other districts in Wayne County. And so tonight, we have, I'm going to ask Mr. Brian Galdes, who is a former superintendent from South Redford, who is my friend and who now leads this incredible work with our partnership with the newly-named Hope and Empowerment, formerly Suicide Provision Coalition. He gave us an update back in 2022 of the work that we're doing alongside our own, Dr. Kathy Grotes and her amazing work. So we just will spend some time having an update from him. I do want to share a little shout-out about Brian that I heard today just because of his dedication, his innovation, just the incredible leader that he is. As a former superintendent in South Redford, you are also, I believe, a student, a teacher, an administrator, a superintendent in South Redford. And he recently had a building named after him. So congratulations for that. And we are grateful that he is working alongside of us on behalf of our students and our school community. So tonight, I'd like to turn this over to you. Welcome you back here to just give an update on this incredible work. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Merritt. It's a pleasure to be back here today. As Superintendent Merritt said, I was here about a year and a half ago. Excuse my voice, I'm not sure what's going on here. But I was here about a year and a half ago. And after I retired as a superintendent... half ago, and after I retired as a superintendent, I joined Girl Forks, which is right here in downtown Plymouth, and I am leading the coalition for, we call it Hope and Empowerment now, but, but we, we help students battle depression and suicide. And so there are actually nine school districts in the, in the coalition, and our, our mission is together battling adolescent depression, suicide, and the stigma along, that goes along with mental health. And I'm not sure, oh, there we go. So, okay. So you can see, those are the school districts that are involved in this, in this coalition. And the reason that we put together the coalition is that we're all doing really hard work. I know Plymouth Canton, I've gotten really, I've gotten to know Plymouth Canton quite well, working with Kathleen Gro, or Kathy Grotes, and I know how hard you're working with adolescent mental health. I know how hard they're working in Taylor and in Clarenceville and Wayne Westland. But we really, if we're going to make a difference, and I'm going to go through some statistics, but if we're going to make a difference, we have to work together. We can't work in silos anymore. We have to, part of our coalition is Trinity Health as well as Corwell Health, and we have to work with the hospitals, we have to work with, with the service providers outside of the schools, too. And so they're all part of the coalition. And your leaders, so we have a steering committee that's made up from, of two representatives from each school district. One is, is somebody who's boots-on-the-ground, they work with kids on a, on a daily best business, or a daily basis, which is important because we need to know what's happening currently. And then we also have someone who is close to the superintendent, that is a central office person, because we need somebody who can make decisions, someone who can go to the superintendent and say, hey, here's what's going on, here's what we decided to do as a coalition. And so these are some things that we need to, to be aware of. And so you have some amazing leaders in both Kathy Grotes and Patricia Williams. They, they not only are they on the steering committee, but they're leaders on the steering committee. So thank you for allowing them to, to be there and their attendance. So before the coalition, I sat down with Superintendent Merritt, and I talked about being a part of the coalition, and you had to commit that you're, the people that you had on the steering committee would be there. Because I know I was a superintendent, I was a principal, I know how hard it is to get not, I know how hard it was to get to things. And I will tell you that the attendance on the steering committee has been amazing, and Patricia and Kathy have been amazing at that. So I am going to talk a little bit about statistics. I talked about these a little bit before, but I believe we have to, every time I get in front of a, a public group, I feel like I have to tell them, because these are the things that drive me. This, this is the reason I, I go to work every day. If you look at the CDC statistics, suicide is the second-leading cause of death for kids, you know, our school-aged kids. Secondly, it used to be the third, it's now the second. So I tell you, numbers aren't going down, they're going up. And so this is a, this is a statistic that really drives me hard, because I, I, I've been involved in this, and I, and I, I still have a hard time believing it. But if you look at the CDC Student Risk Behavior Survey from, from the twenty twenty-two, that's their latest one that's out, this is a, some research that shows what's going on across the country. So this isn't just a Plymouth Canton issue, this isn't a Michigan issue, this isn't a Midwest issue. This is across the country. The nu, the numbers are almost identical. We have another survey that we do locally that measures some of the same things, and our numbers are exactly the same. It's amazing how, how, how much they, they, they support each other. But if you look at the statistics, this is the national rate, this is the state rate. There's about sixty-two hundred Plymouth Canton students in the high schools. So forty percent of students report feeling extremely hopeless over the, for at least two weeks in the last twelve months. And we measure that because hopelessness is a thing that drives suicide. So those who make that choice, whether they're adults or their kids, they believe that, that they're either in a hopeless situation, or they're just feeling hopeless because of their life. So that's two thousand five hundred and five Plymouth Canton students. And again, that's not documented students, this is extrapolated numbers. So if you looked at, at, at forty percent of sixty-two hundred, that's how we came up to that number. But there's no reason to believe it isn't, it isn't accurate, because this crosses race, it crosses socioeconomic standards, it crosses religion. This is not something that is somebody else's problem. Seventeen percent have made a plan, that means a one thousand, and ninety-one Plymouth Canton students have made a plan to take their life. And this is a number that just, I, I just can't accept. We, we, we've got to do something, we've got to make a difference. But ninety percent of our students across the country have made an attempt on their life. Not made a plan and not thought about it, but actually made an attempt of some sort. That's five hundred and fifty-eight Plymouth Canton students. Again, if you extrapolate that ninety percent over sixty-two hundred, that number's unacceptable. And if you talk to your counselors, if you talk to your social workers, if you talk to your kids, have a real conversation about your, to your kids about their friends and, and what's happening, that's a real number. So that's, that's one of the things that drive me. There's also a, a study that was done by the University of Michigan, and there's forty thousand teens in our, in Michigan right now who are diagnosed with a mental health diagnosis. They, they're diagnosed, and they're not getting any treatment. And there's three reasons why. Stigma is one, it's, it's a hard thing for a family to wrestle with. Two, access to care. If you've ever tried to access the, the mental health care organizations, it's, it's tough to get care. It's getting better, but it, but it's still, it's still tough. And then affordability. Mental health is not looked at as the same way as physical health. So if you need to get the help, and you're diagnosed, and you try to get someone, you might, your insurance might not cover it, or it might cover it for ten visits. You know, if, if you have cancer or something, if they don't say, well, you get ten visits, and then, you know, and then you're, you're on your own kind of thing. Well, that's what happens with mental health. So some of those things we, you know, are out of our control, but there are some things that we can do, and that's what the coalition is all about. So in last year, our work was to, as a coalition, come up with a, a common screener across all of our high schools in, in the coalition, in all our middle schools, as well as all of the hospitals that are in our area. And so we came up with a common screener, which is a Columbia screener. And so when a parent, when a child's in crisis, a family's in crisis. And the last thing they need to do is to, every time they go to a different level, have to go through the same process again. It's, it's time-consuming, it's hard on, on, on the, on the students. And so we've all agreed to use the same screener, and we've worked closely with Trinity Health and, and Corwell Health, and they're using the same screeners now in the emergencies rooms and stuff as that we're using in the schools. We're all using the same language. Student and staff QPR training. QPR training is giving an individual the tools to be able to help someone who's in crisis. Doesn't mean that you're going to give them counseling. It's kind of like CPR, QPR, that's why they kind of named it that, but it's, it's, so someone has a heart attack in front of me, if I know CPR, I can keep them alive until help gets there. I'm not going to give them heart surgery, right? But, but that gives me the tools to do that. QPR is the same thing. If, if Monica were to come to me and say, you know, would, would give me some clues, I get kind of trained on what some of those clues might be, then I have some, some tools in my belt to be able to help her to get the help that she needs. We're doing a lot of research, we have subcommittees that work and research best practices, and so we're trying to share those practices. And we get a lot of mutual support. This was something I didn't anticipate in the beginning, but a lot of our mental health professionals in our schools are sometimes one-offs in a school, so they, they don't have someone to sit down with and talk about what they're doing. One, their schedules are pretty full, but two, there just isn't someone there. And particularly some of our, our, our district-level people, especially ones that are in smaller districts. They might be the only person that, in their whole district. So they've been able to make these relationships and connections, and I've actually received calls from, from special ed directors who have said, you know, we have this unique situation, and we just don't know what to do, and it's pretty serious. You know, can you help us? And well, I don't know that I can help you, my background's leadership, not necessarily mental health, but let me see what I can do. And actually, I've called on Kathy a couple times to help others who haven't had, who they might be new in the position and may not have experienced them. So that afternoon, we would have a Zoom call with maybe three people who have had experience in the same situation, and they're helping each other out. Unfortunately, we did have a, a student take their life in one of our coalition districts last year, and districts came to their aid. It's hard when you have the, the tragedy within your own school, because the people who are counting on helping everybody else might be the most affected. And so, so we bring in people from other districts to help out. We do a lot of professional development now. Again, because there's not a lot of mental health professionals in the schools compared to math teachers, science teachers, we put together a conference on, on Election Day, which is the day when all schools are closed for, for students, and we do professional development. And so we do, so we do a big day on Election Day, a big conference, and we held it at Thurston High School this year. We had over four hundred mental health professionals from the schools within our coalition attend, attend, and it was something they really appreciated and will continue to do. We also work with Trinity Health on doing some mini-conferences, so we'll do about seven of those throughout the school year. So what are we doing moving forward? Supporting students and families that are in acute crisis. We're working on that transition between a student having a crisis in a school, and then having to go to maybe an emergency room, or maybe they're going to have to go to a residential treatment center for maybe a week, maybe two weeks. You can imagine the additional stress that that puts on a student who, you know, they might have classes that they still are responsible for the work, or they might have two or three AP classes. And so how are we going to support those students in those situations when, when they're in, when they can't access school? And then how do we support them transitioning back to school? So that, it, it, it's a pretty huge problem, and it's actually a big problem for the healthcare professionals, too. And so they're on board with us, and then we're going to be working through that this year. We're also looking at student leadership programs. So there's two that, that we're activating this year. One of them is a peer-to-peer program. When students are in crisis, the first people that know are their friends. And the, you know, students don't, they're not equipped, actually, even are adults a lot of times, equipped with that situation when they find out that their, their loved one or their friend is in crisis. And so we're looking at some tier-one programs, and actually, it's an expectation from the coalition that every middle, every district has some kind of a peer-to-peer program to help support kids in schools. Yeah, as Superintendent Merritt said, I've been in education my entire life, and so, you know, like, this is something that was a kind of a shock to me, I didn't realize it. But if you look at the research, spite, there's a, there's up, upward spikes in suicide attempts and suis, completed suicides during stressful school times, so the beginning of the school year, exam times, those kinds of times. And then there's a spike down during vacation times. So, so clearly, if you look at the data, schools aren't supporting student mental health. And I'm not naive enough to think we're going to change grade point and all those kinds of things, right? But what we can do is we can support students in school through those situations, and that's, that's our goal. And so by empowering, giving students the ability to have peer relationships and, and build programs within the schools, that will help. And, and so right now, Plymouth Canton is looking at a program called Be Nice. As a matter of fact, I, I had met with Kathy today and some of her principals, and we had Be Nice come in and talk. And it's, it's, it's an outstanding program. Our coalition believes in it so much that we raised the money to be able to pay for the program in, in, in all seventeen high schools and all nineteen middle schools across the coalition. And so we're paying for the program for three years, and that's how much we believe that those peer programs are so important for kids. And also student voice, we're not going to move that needle, that ninety percent's not going to go down until we have student voice. And so we are putting together a student steering committee, and they will lead and guide and give voice to our, our professional steering committee. And we had our first event on Saturday, and we had students, high school students, come to high school, one of our high schools, and we, we had a keynote speaker and whatnot, and we broke them off into, into some smaller groups, and then really had them talk about, so what's going on? What's working for you? What's not working for you? Tell us about your friends, tell us about the culture, how can we, how can we support you, you know, with mental health in your schools? Just absolutely blown away by their insight and, and not pie-in-the-sky kind of things, and not like more recess kind of things, really insightful, thoughtful ideas about what can be done. So I'm really excited about that. What we're going to do, starting in February, is we will have three representatives from all seventeen high schools, meeting on a monthly basis, and we are going to put them through some processes to be able to really shape their, their vision and their, their input, and that, and they'll work alongside the, the other steering committee, which is the central office person and the boots-on-the-ground person, and, and that will be powerful. I think that program in itself will be the most powerful thing we can do, is bring that student voice and leadership to our work. So I'm super excited about that. And so when I come back next time, I'll tell you all about that, maybe even bring some So we, we've had some, some recognition for the work that we're doing. I, I was appointed by the governor to the Michigan Suicide Prevention Commission, and so that was a great honor for me to, to be able to work in Lansing on some of this work. And we also, Trent, our Trinity Health was awarded the prestigious Ludwig Award for the work that we're doing, and, and money came along with that, and that's actually helping us do the student program. Because the student program is not, is totally funded through Growth Works and Trinity Health, Plymouth Canton won't pay for any of the expenses for that program either. So we're, we're really trying to not have the, the school district strapped financially because of some of the work we're doing. If we think it's important, we're trying to pay for it. So, and, and that's two programs that cost money, but we're going to pay for them. We do a lot of legislative things, and, and so we'll continue to do that. And, and that's pretty much the work I, this, you have this report on your, on your desk there, and this is our annual report, so you can kind of see the work in a little more detail than, than what I talked about, of the work we did, and then a little bit about our future work. So, so that's for you to keep, and I'm open to any questions you might have.
Great, thank you. I'm actually going to start off with our student co-chair members. Josh, do you have any questions?
I just want to say thank you for all your work in this. I know many people who have been impacted by mental health struggles, so thank you. And then as a member of the Student Voice in Action Committee, I would love to try and kind of collaborate with you in any way possible, or work with you guys to bring student voice in whatever way you need from our committee as well, if that would be possible.
Absolutely. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yep, and thank you again.
You're welcome.
I basically wanted to say the same thing that Josh did. It would be great if Student Voice in Action could collaborate with you guys, and thank you for all the work that you've done.
You're welcome, and I welcome your input, and we're, we're kind of creating this as we, you know, as we, we started up, and so Mrs. Grotes will be able to help you guys to, to make that connection with us, so I'm, I'm looking forward to your input.
Members to do.
Thank you for representing South Redford, my home base. Thank you for the work that you're doing. This is critical, and it's just, it's not getting easier or better, and it continues. I looked at the Eastern numbers last, Eastern University, Eastern Michigan University. Last week, we were looking at similar numbers for college students, and very similar patterns, and the, the needs are the same, which is lack of access, not enough professionals available, limitations on insurance. And so I have a lot of questions in terms of how do we target those areas, but the one I want to start with is looking at your pamphlet. You have this chart of school-based mental health practitioners, and you've got events. Are any of these events being held for families within Plymouth Canton or any other school district?
That's a great question, and actually, I had that conversation with someone yesterday in terms of, I was talking about the student leadership program, and they asked a great question, well, what about parents? You know, that's a, a third leg on the You know, that's a third leg on the stool, right, that we need to, and I agree on 100%. And so I do see in the future that there will be a parent component to it, but we don't have that now. I see that in our future. It's critical.
It is.
And one thing that I've learned is that this is really a marathon. This is not a sprint. There's so many things that I want to do, but it's going to take us some time, and we're going to have to have some patience, but that's a wonderful point. It's come up twice now in two days, and I think that if we're going to, again, move that needle, we have to have parents and families involved, too.
Yeah, and particularly understanding, if there's families out there that are listening, in understanding, one, how important this is, and I, as a teacher, have run into families that say, oh, it's not a big deal, they'll get over it. These things are real, and we need to take kids seriously and love them unconditionally. These are kids, right? So for families that are out there, find the support. I know that there's some hotline numbers that we have at Plymouth Canton. We just want to make sure that you are supported in whatever you do with the kids, and these are going to be hard times for some people, especially in the holiday season where some families may not be able to be together or may not have what they need. So I always find this to be a really critical time for people that are struggling. But just to know that we have to break that stigma, just to go back to your point, make this a conversation that is normal. I mean, these things are happening, these are big numbers happening to a lot of kids, and whatever we can do to help is our job, and whatever we can do as school board members, let us know, Dr. Merritt, board members, you know, if there are ways that we can help, I'd love to be a part of that.
Well, thank you, thank you. And I'm here to speak, obviously, for the coalition and not for Plymouth Canton Public Schools, but I also have made some observations. I've been in the schools, I've worked with Mrs. Grotis, and I've seen the work that Plymouth Canton does. Just a couple of examples. First of all, is Superintendent Merritt's support. The conversations we have had have been so supportive and so encouraging, which I really appreciate. And, but I know that Plymouth Canton sponsors that event, that fair in the park, which is, you know, it's amazingly attended. We have a booth there, you know, so we're there, but it's, you have great attendance there. I know that the Penn Theater is, I know that the school system has had some great presenters at the Penn Theaters once a month. I've attended those. And so Plymouth Canton is doing a lot of things for families, but there's so much more that we can do. And I really go back to those statistics that talk about the spikes in what happens during the school and how we can support kids during those times. I think that's important.
And thanks for mentioning Kathy. Thanks for all the work that you do. I didn't want to make it sound like nothing's happening. She's doing amazing work at Plymouth Canton, so thanks to her and everyone that's involved with that work.
She is remarkable.
She is.
Secretary Wester?
So, thank you. Everything that Member Seduce said is valid, and I won't repeat it. Thank you especially for the slide that has the numbers on it of the state, of the comparison to Plymouth Canton and how many students that is. And it really highlighted for me how important our social-emotional learning and our mental health efforts and our family Office of Student and Family Engagement and all of those, all of those supports that we have in place, that we've worked so hard to put in place and expand, how important they are, and I hope that we see them continue and grow in the future. Because kids that, you know, kids that attempt suicide or complete suicide, I mean, that's devastating for everyone. All right, so, thank you. I have a lot of questions, but I'll save them for later.
Yeah, I echo what my colleagues have said, too. I just had a question about the Be Nice program. So is that a framework, or are we relying on our student committee to help drive what that looks like? Can you explain or elaborate what that Be Nice peer-to-peer support looks like in each of our buildings?
Yeah, peer-to-peer support is a, it's a tier-one program, so it's really aimed at all students, and it helps build a culture within the school that is supporting each other, you know, love each other, and that's kind of the framework. I know it sounds simplistic, but it gives you activities and a framework for making that happen. And then it does recruit some kids, some of the students who are interested in doing the work, that kind of lead that work within the, so it brings student voice and student leadership to that initiative. So it's, that's kind of it in a nutshell. I can get you more information if you're interested in that, so.
Yeah, I would love to learn more, but as if I'm just, I'm going to parrot back what I think I heard, it's a framework that is supported by our student coalition or our student steering committee to help bolster that kind of across each building, so.
It is, it is, yeah. Well, I'll make sure that we get you some information on that program.
Yeah, great, thank you, appreciate that.
Hi, thank you for your presentation. So is that the same, I had some same questions on that. Is that for, are you going to try to put that with all those schools that are in that district that you listed, or are they going to?
You're talking about Plymouth Canton, or you're talking?
Like, is that like a whole, like, you're going to try to do with all this, like, have like a student gathering or something from all the different schools?
Yeah, so we're starting, I just met with the principals at the high school, so we're starting there. The middle school, our goal is that Plymouth Canton K-12 has the Be Nice program in place. It is a mental health awareness initiative and suicide prevention, and it is led by the students, but also there's a lot of support that the buildings get involved in, and it brings mental health awareness to the forefront, which we want.
Yes, thank you.
We, I think I mentioned this before, but it is, it is, it is an understanding to be in the coalition that every district will have some kind of a peer-to-peer program. I share this, but I lost a stepdaughter to depression and suicide. And one of the most difficult things that her mother and I had went through was going through herself after she had passed. And, you know, it was so crushing, you know, to see the stuff that was related to her, but also our heart really went out to her friends because it was clear that they knew she was in crisis, and it's clear they didn't know what to do. And so these programs, again, they don't, they don't try to turn kids into counselors at all, but it helps them to travel that journey. You know, how do I help the person that I love so much get the help that they need? And so how do you, you know, how do you deal with a question, I think I might want to hurt myself, or I might not want to wake up tomorrow? You know, how do you deal with that? Kids know before adults do. And so that's why these programs are so important, and that's why we're paying for them.
Thank you. Thank, that helped.
Member Ahmed?
Thank you. I just really want to thank you for the presentation and for all your work. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, we are on to teaching and learning with Ms. Rail.
Thank you. So it's my honor tonight to introduce the high school team, who is going to talk about some high school highlights. We did review this presentation and talked pretty in-depth around it at SPA, so here we typically do kind of higher-level highlights and stuff, but then we'll open up to questions at the end. So with us tonight is Hal Hurd, Executive Director of High School Education, along with Greg England, Principal of Plymouth High School, Kimberly Doeman, Principal of Starkweather, David Reed-Nordwell, Principal of Canton High School, and Kim Villarosa, Principal of Salem High School. I know David just stepped out for a minute, he should be right back as well, so I'm going to turn it over to Hal.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're here to share some PCCS high school programming highlights for the fall of 2024-25 school year. We've been focusing intentionally on three critical areas that directly impact student success, sense of belonging, behavior, and attendance. These focus points are interconnected elements that we have identified as key drivers of academic performance. On our next slide, you can see our, okay, maybe not.
It takes a second.
Oh, point, okay. All right.
There's a little bit of a lag.
All right, let me go back because I clicked it a bunch of times. So as you can see here, kind of one of our driving forces is our dynamic plan with all of our goals that we align to. And on our next slide, you can see our common high school vision, which centers on three pillars, ensuring equitable access to positive collaborative culture with varied opportunities, maintaining safe environments that truly value diversity and excellence with flexible learning options, and developing strong, independent, adaptive learners who can achieve excellence in their unique goals. Each student's path to success looks different, and our vision embraces that reality. Also, you have our logic model, which outlines our structured approach to achieving these things with our students. And next, these three focus areas, sense of belonging, behavior, and attendance, they're not isolated initiatives, they work together, each supporting and enhancing the others. Now I'll hand it over to our high school principals to share specific initiatives we're implementing this year, and they'll demonstrate how we're bringing these concepts to life in our schools.
All right. So tough to capture everything we're trying to do, you know, around this in the time that we have, so some highlights to kind of walk through just examples of the things. Canton, of course, is a big push for our culture and the moving forward honoring where we've been, but also moving forward with the mascot and having student voice as part of our culture. You see attendance groups there in the middle center top photo that, in the work, the celebrations that I've been doing at Starkweather, and really developing a culture of celebrating excellence. We have, over in the upper right, we have a day of our chaperones and staff that are a part of being there together in our events. The lower-left corner, we have a celebration that we do a Thanksgiving feast for our students who are also in some of our special needs programs, and the student mentors, as you heard with the Be Nice peer-to-peer work, is huge in what we do, and that's an example of that there. The center point, we kick off the year and then reinforce that always when onboarding our freshmen, so that's our central link crew day where we have all the freshmen gathered together with all the staff. And then just one of the many things we do, the painted parking spot where you have a lot of student, you want to see evidence of student personality, and you see that just going by our parking lots, you see that in our buildings, and they create some ownership, some sense of having a parking spot to be in, but also the pride and the statements that the students make. Saying, and as students really put it very well, is to create a safe personalized space for all students to be the goal, that they can feel some ownership and some sense of home in our school.
And as you can see here on our slide, when we talk about sense of belonging and looking at some of the feedback that we've got from our Panorama survey, you can see that our sense of belonging increased by six points at the park and 10 points at Starkweather. And now we'll move on to behavior. All right, thank you, good evening. So after reviewing data in August, we recognized that our behavior data is trending in a good direction, it's trending down, but one of our initiatives is we really wanted to do some things that were proactive in terms of what we can do with behavior, ways that we can enforce the positive behavior that we want to see with our students. And so the goal is to establish consistency across the high schools, that's one of the things that we wanted to focus on, and we believe that will help increase the sense of belonging, because as Mr. Hurd said at the beginning of his presentation, all these things are connected, they're all working together to create the environment we want in our high schools. So some of the things that we did, really working with our staff, making sure we're on the same page with the behaviors we want to see, so talking about our tardy policy, how we can work with teachers, how that's going to help us communicate with our students. Additionally, reviewing behavior expectations with our students, that's something that we do at the beginning of every year, and we also do, I don't know, I got a hair trigger on this, all right. And that's something that we do throughout the year as well. We also have our E-WIMS program, our early warning intervention monitoring system, which allows us to use Panorama data and really catch students who might be, who have behavior instances, academics, attendance issues as well, so we can really work to support those students. So those are some of the things that we're working on, proactive measures that we're trying to have in place. On our slide here, some of the pictures we have are just examples of the behavior on campus in our high schools. In the top left, we have our homecoming, that's Canton's homecoming, positive behavior, a big event, but really a fun event, things we like to do. We have one of our teachers there as a DJ. In the middle, we have the Canton Hurricane Relief, and really demonstrating the environment that we want on our campus, and it allows for students to do these types of things to support positive behavior in ways that they can impact our community. On the right, we have Starkweather staff, they're being trained in restorative practices as well as leader in me, some proactive frameworks and approaches that we can use to support students. The bottom left is at Plymouth High School, one of our student meetings at the beginning of the year where we go over expectations, we answer questions for students to make sure we're all on the same page. In the middle, I mentioned, is just the E-WIMS program, and in the bottom right, something else to kind of positively and proactively support the behavior we want to see, students who are on times. We have a 10-bit pop-up at Plymouth between 7:15 and stops right at 7:25 when it's time to be in class, to kind of support that behavior we want to see with students.
I'm not going to talk a lot because I've kind of lost my voice, but one of the things that I wanted to mention, when we talked about all three of the areas, I have seen such a big difference since we came back from the pandemic. When we came back, we were dealing with some behaviors that were, quite honestly, really challenging, and I think as we've had time to work with kids proactively, I've seen things get significantly better and better every year, and I think one of the things that contributes to that is when the kids came back to school, they didn't know, like, I was the principal, they didn't know who I was, I'd ask them to do something, they kind of look at me like, yeah, whatever. But as they get to know the adults in the building, and as we've had time to work with them more and more and consistently over months and school years, I've seen real, real big improvements, and it's been great to see.
Good evening. I'm going to be talking about attendance, so more, more, one more, okay. More good news to report. So across all four of the high schools, we have seen an improvement in our data in attendance from last school year to this school year. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what we're doing at the schools. So those top three pictures there are Starkweather students. Since the first week of school this school year, we've been doing every single week perfect attendance initiatives and really making that a part of our culture at the school and celebrating that as a school body every week. So every Monday, we get on a Google Meet, school-wide, all students that had perfect attendance from the week prior get their name on a wheel of names, and we select winners every week, and we celebrate them. And thanks to local businesses and organizations that we were able to partner with here in Plymouth Canton, we've had all kinds of goods and services donated that the students could select when they were chosen. One of the cool things, it was a big hit, was the Detroit Tigers donated tickets earlier in the fall, that was great. The bottom-left picture there, one of the partners that we had was through Friendship Church. They came and wanted to celebrate all of the students for one highlighted week that had perfect attendance, and so we had a VIP party event, and they came out, they fed the kids, they had this big party, they brought the blowups. It was a hit. They're teenage kids, and they loved all the blowups, okay? And it was such a big hit that they wanted to do that every quarter, so we have another one coming up next week, a big VIP party event. Happy to report that our highest week of students attending perfectly was during that week. They were very excited to not only go, but also encouraging their friends to be there every single day. So a lot of good things happening in Plymouth Canton, for sure.
And also just some of our data pieces that we wanted to share as well. I'll kind of go to this slide here, it gives an overall, some metrics for us. As I mentioned before, around the sense of belonging, you can see how we saw improvement from fall of 2023 to fall of 2024, also including areas of diversity and inclusion. You can see that there was growth there as well. And then when we started looking at students that are not chronically absent, you can see some of the numbers there as well. I think there's transpose there.
I think there's transpose there. Let me go back to the right slide. This slide here has the right numbers here, where you have from the fall of 2023, you can see it was 87%, and now for the fall of 2024, you see that it's up to 88%. Then also over at Starkweather, where you see it last year, at the same time period, 31%, now at 37% there. So those are some of our data points that we've kind of uncovered as we go through and kind of always look at our data as well. Also, we want to attribute some of this work to some of the things that you supported in our student success room that's up and running now in its full, its second full year as well. And we wanted to, I've got a point over here. Some additional highlights that we would like to share at the high school level around dual enrollment. Looking at our dual enrollment data, we've seen remarkable growth. 176% across all high schools from 2020 to 2024. Canton and Plymouth High Schools have shown the strongest increases at 211% and 208% respectively, with Salem at 145%. Our spring semester enrollment has grown particularly fast, jumping from 56 students to 202 students. Fall enrollment also grew substantially from 79 students to 171 students. We also want to look at another one of the highlights of this first year for our early middle college. Our program is an innovative five-year model where students can earn both their high school diploma and 60 credit, college credits or an associate degree. Our first cohort includes 25 students with eight already taking classes at Schoolcraft College. These students are pursuing various paths, three in computer science, one in business administration, and four in general business. We partner with both Schoolcraft and Washington Community College to offer 12 different degree pathways, ranging from technical fields like mechatronics to professional programs like business administration. Students take two courses in the fall and winter terms and one in the spring with a comprehensive support throughout their journey. Also, we want to make sure that we highlight and note our four academies that we have at the park, our Arts Academy, Business Academy, our International Academy, and our STEM Academy, with the various pathways that each have. And as well as our strong CTE, our Career Technical Education program, our CTE program. And you can see here, we've outlined our 15 program offerings that we have for our students at the high school level. And then lastly, among our key achievements this year, I wanted to highlight two significant developments. First, our student success room, which I alluded to a couple of slides ago, continues to provide targeted support and resources for students needing additional assistance. And secondly, we're particularly proud of our 24 National Merit semifinalists, which represents an exceptional level of academic achievement and places our district among the top performers in the state. So thank you for your attention during this presentation, and what questions might you have for us?
Okay, I'll start with Josh.
Not necessarily a question, but could you go to the slide with all the data on it? I just wanted to point one thing out for anybody who didn't notice it. Sorry, now it's hard to click. So if you look, the behavior percent was zero incidence. If you look, that's not a blip in the data or anything. That's the actual percentages increase. It's huge. At Starkweather, a 39% increase, and then at PSEP, a 21% increase. So I just wanted to highlight that in case you missed it. I thought that was huge, so. And that's not just an accident. That's due to all the work they're doing, so. And thank you for all that.
And a positive was during SPA. We had several students that were there, and they talked about the, and Josh was there. Multiple students talked about just the sense of belonging and how behavior has improved at PSEP. So kudos to the students that were there for sharing their voice as well.
On the same slide that Josh brought up, I had a quick question about what you guys count as chronically absent. Like, how many absences does a student have to have for that to be applied?
I can take that piece if you'd like, or it's up to you guys. So it's 10% of the eligible days that a student has been in attendance. So once 10 days have equaled, and Mr. Tiskowitz can support that as well. So over the course of 180 school days, you're looking at 18 days or less. 18 days or more, you are considered chronically absent.
Thank you.
Members to do?
Thank you. Congratulations on those amazing numbers. I know this is not easy work, and it obviously takes a team effort. Thanks to Josh and the other students for validating that. I love it when students can speak to what they're seeing in the building. You had mentioned that some of this is attributed to the student success specialist. Could you highlight maybe another one or two things that you think has really helped change those numbers? Because some of those are drastic improvements. Because I'd love to hear what are the couple of things that you really want to keep focusing on?
One of the things that we went back to doing that we didn't do for a few years is meeting with every group of students in every one of our buildings the first week that they were in school to tell them exactly what our expectations were. We tried to do it in a really proactive way, like, hey, we're not here to say, don't do this. And the idea was, these are the things we want you to do to be successful, and these are the things we want you to avoid doing so we don't have behavior problems. And that obviously interferes with their learning. So I think that's one. I think the, I think homeroom helps too. It's another opportunity for another adult in a different way to engage with our students that's not necessarily somebody giving them a grade. So I think that's good. I think our student success room has helped. She's done some groups with students on Wednesdays, and I'm trying to think. Somebody else jump in.
So like a self-care and prevention group, you know, for students who are having difficulty with substances. Our professional development to start off the year focused on sense of belonging and how you start the class, how you start the first week. We really emphasized the relationships and really getting to know the students. A lot of that input came back from students saying when you have relationships with the teachers, it makes a difference on showing up. The positive push we've been putting around attendance, the more you're present, the more of a connection with the school that you feel. We've been starting up student groups, like our principals advisory teams, actual direct steering committees that give feedback to the principals and help us with our decisions around the school-based policy, but also events that we could hold, like our homeroom hangouts that we've done, and some of the other positive, like fun things that we're doing. Designing new, kind of creative spaces for students. Like, we have a survey out right now, what students would like around lunch. They're asking for quiet spaces to study and eat, and we're making those, providing it for them. And a lot of this through the students themselves partnering with us to build these. And really returning back to that, when you feel like the place is yours, you take better care of it. And then just a whole lot of work, you know, being there and like teaching the skills. Because as you came back from COVID, they didn't have students who had been sharing space, and so they were leaving a mess, or sometimes didn't know how to handle conflict. So a lot of that work about being present, being with students, interacting, talking with them, and helping teach, and keep growing our peer-to-peer group. So there's a whole lot of things that lead to it, in addition to the targeted support for groups that are struggling. But it needs to be for everybody. It's like what you heard Brian talk about with growth works, that universal. All students should be experiencing these things, and it should start to make that difference.
Thank you. Congratulations to the team. Thanks for your hard work.
Thank you for an excellent presentation. We've talked an awful lot about this in the SPA committee. Our community members honestly couldn't get over the numbers about the behavior differences. And you actually gave, in the SPA committee, you actually gave the numbers, what that translated to, in numbers of behavior incidents, what the reduction was. Can you repeat that for the whole board? And I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
What day was that?
Because it was impressive. I mean, it's great to see the statistic, but then the actual numbers.
That may be something we could get back to you, because at the moment, I don't recall the numbers. So that's something that we can get back to you, those exact numbers. You know, our apologies. It was last week, so.
And I don't remember myself, but I know when you actually put it into numbers, it was like, oh, wow, that is a huge difference. But I'd also like, it's fortuitous that you had Brian here earlier at the same time because it really highlights, kids that are depressed don't learn. Kids that don't feel like they belong don't learn. And, you know, kids that are struggling with what the rules are don't learn. And I think having those two presentations, as well as the one, the other one that we saw in SPA that will be presented next week, really highlight the value of the social emotional learning and the mental health initiatives that we've done and all of that. And I really appreciate all of the hard work that you've done. And I appreciate your feedback because there is a real toxic narrative in this community that, you know, there are behavior problems at the park, and that may have been true at one time, but that does not appear to be the case. You know, we've done a lot of work to make that not the narrative now. And I appreciate the feedback that we had in the SPA committee from the students that backed up everything that you are saying. These are real numbers. Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Very much. I do have a couple of questions, and they're more like nitpicky around the programs that you highlighted. So great presentation, but for non-high school parents, you know, I have younger kiddos. I'm just wondering if you can explain, what does dual enrollment mean? What is that? It seems that it's increased over the last couple of years. Can you explain?
So when you, I just want to practice with the, with this.
One more slide?
So when you.
Oh, we lost it.
I know what. I'm going to get the boardroom for Christmas. So when you speak of dual enrollment, it's an opportunity where students, if they qualify by meeting the criteria, there's a set criteria from the state. Also, there's, some districts have even more extenuating criteria. If a student meets that criteria, they're able to take college classes while they're still in high school. So that's also an advantage for the students to even go deeper in their learning. And also, it's also a great advantage for families as well, for students to be able to do both. Because then, once they graduate and move on to college, or if they want to go on a particular pathway, that saves them money in the long run, families' money in that place. And also helps the students accelerate their progress in getting that degree. I know for me, as I mature in my career, you know, it also helps secure social security for me as well. But it's a great opportunity. It's open to all students. Sometimes, not a lot of districts put it out there for students, but our students are really taking advantage of it, and it's great opportunities for them. And as well for our own learning, when they bring things back to us, and we can try different things. And now, there's a, I know we have some, there was a program with, or I can't, I've lost words. Program with Schoolcraft, how we're benefiting from that, where the cost is not really costing the district anymore. I think it was elaborated a couple of months ago as well, so, you know, taking advantage of that right now has been huge.
I appreciate that extra detail.
Can I jump back in for just a minute? One of the things that we discussed in SPA was that at some point, we need to bring a presentation about dual enrollment in early middle college to the board, because what's happening in those programs is amazing. And it's such a value, both of them are such valuable programs to the district.
And we can share details about the types of programs students are engaging in and stuff, because we have some very unique offerings for our young people. We have students taking aviation courses that are unique to PCCS. We have, you know, students that are taking a wide gamut of college courses while they're in high school, paid for by their FTE through the district, so at no cost for tuition and stuff to families. So it allows students, especially those who may not often have the opportunity to attend college, to do so. And so there's so many great benefits to dual enrollment programs and early middle college programs and stuff. So we'll bring much more detail back.
Great. I look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, and I wanted to ask about the survey. Do you get a lot of participation in that? Because I know high school tends to be less.
I can take that one because in the spring last year, we saw a pretty dramatic drop in the percentage of students who, high school students who had taken it, but we saw a pretty good increase in that as well this fall. So the team has done a really intentional push to ensure that students' voices are being heard. And we also had some really good feedback from the students about the difference those initiatives have made, and also some additional things we might consider doing to help more students give their voice as well. Mr. Flukes will bring those actual numbers in January, because we'll share the Panorama survey data from the fall survey and show you the numbers, and then continue to do that work as well, so.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I really appreciated the presentation, and my question is kind of forward-looking. Are you planning to continue working on these three things for the 20, moving forward, like for the next calendar year, for the next school year? Or are you picking different things to focus on?
So one of the things that we do each summer is that we have a summer retreat with the building principals and myself. And we kind of go back and review data, and we kind of see like, okay, what things are working, what things are not working, and then how do they align? When we showed that slide with the high school vision, are they aligned to that vision? If they're not aligned to that vision, then we need to stop doing that. And that vision is also aligned to not only the dynamic plan, but also like our mission and vision for the district. So if it's not aligned there, then we stop doing those particular things. And we look at what are the needs, also what are some things that are, our students are going to be facing after they leave us? And, you know, taking all those things into consideration, then we come up with what are the three things that we need to focus on for the particular year? So there's a particular, there is a, an activity that we go through. And I know they all enjoy it, because they're all nodding back there. But there's an activity where we kind of go through a matrix of like, what's high impact, high doability types of things, and then we kind of narrow it down to three things, because we don't want to get more than three. Because once you get more than three, you kind of get people going in all different directions. But you can really focus on those three areas. So that's kind of like our process in a nutshell, and kind of seeing where we kind of belong, or kind of guide us for the year. Like, sense of belonging has kind of been a theme that's been over the last few years that we've kind of been focused on. So that more likely will be staying, because we want to make sure students have the best experience in high school with us.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we are on to action item number 25-12-37. Consider approval of a resolution for a new course proposal, Evolution of Music. This is a final reading. Can I please have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for a new course, Evolution of Music, action item 251237.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Secretary Westra and seconded by Member Picard. We discussed this at our last meeting. I'm going to call for the vote, so those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries 5-0. Okay, moving on to action item number 25-12-38. Consider approval of a resolution for a new course proposal, Soundscapes. This is also a final reading. Can I have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for a new course proposal, Soundscapes, action item 251238.
Can I have a second?
A second.
Okay, it was moved by Secretary Westra and seconded by Member Ahmed. Again, we talked about this at our last meeting, so I'm going to call for the vote. Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries 5-0. All right. Moving on to finance and operations with Ms. Minnick.
Good evening. Thank you, President Christensen. Our first item is a final reading.
Yes, thank you. So this is action item number 25-12-39. This is to consider the approval of a resolution to purchase elevator lowering unit at six buildings. This is a final reading. Can I have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution to purchase elevator lowering units at six buildings, action item 251239.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Secretary Westra and seconded by Member Sidhu. Again, we talked about this at last meeting, so I would like to call for the vote. Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Okay, motion carries 5-0. Okay, on to action item number 25-12-40. Consider approval of a resolution to purchase 14 school buses. We're asking this for the first and final reading. I'm going to ask for a motion, then we'll open it up for discussion afterwards. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution to purchase 14 school buses, action item 25-12-40.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Secretary Westra and seconded by Members Sedu. Ms. Minnick, can you take us through the resolution, please?
Thank you, good evening. As part of our 2020 bond program, we seek to maintain a safe and optimally operating fleet of yellow school buses. And we strive to maintain a 10-year average lifecycle of each bus. So, with that, our cadence in the past has been to replace an average of about 10 buses per year during those years when we have a, an active bond program and the funding available. This is a prudent approach to a balance of continued repairs versus perhaps divesting of the asset. So, this year, we are recommending the purchase of 14 Transit rear-engine 84-passenger diesel-powered regular education school buses from Holland Bus Company. These are not Lyft buses. And we have a history typically, it doesn't always have to be the case, but we often alternate between special ed purchase, special needs buses with regular ed bus purchases each year. So, this year, non-Lift buses are being recommended. Also with that, we like to maintain the continuity in our vehicle platforms, both for enhancing the efficiency of bus repairs and maintenance. And so, for this reason, I'm recommending the purchase of Bluebird buses. The Holland, Holland Bus Company has submitted the lowest bid as a Bluebird distributor. These buses are at a cost of $184,659 per bus, and a total cost for 14 buses of $2,585,226. So, with that, these buses would be purchased for that $2.5 million value paid through the 2023 bond series. As you mentioned, Madam President, also, we are respectfully requesting consideration for a final approval this evening, as we recently became aware of price escalation that will be in place come the first of the year, at what we hear will be a 10% to 15% price increase. So, with that, I'm happy to, to recommend that this evening, so that we can avoid what might be about a quarter million dollar of a price increase. Should this purchase be approved, we have a bus build date. These buses would be built on March 24th. Anticipated delivery would be about six to eight weeks following, so that we would have these at a really great time during the school year to receive those buses, prepare them for deployment and being put into service in the fall. And maybe even perhaps over summer, for any summer transportation we may do for programming. With that, we would plan to auction 15 buses. That has been our cadence as well, to auction buses. We've had really good returns and proceeds on those buses, so we anticipate the same to be true this year. We will always make accommodation for appointments for potential purchasers to view the buses. Our mechanics will have them running, so that people can see that they are operational. And all of that is part of an auction process that we would typically follow. These buses come with a standard five-year, 100,000-mile warranty, bumper-to-bumper. That warranty then is on the engine, transmission, and the entire fuel system. The selection of buses for replacement takes into account a number of factors, including the mileage, the age, repair histories, as well as state inspection requirements, and then as well residual value and the overall condition of the engine, transmission, other mechanical systems, interior wear and tear, and then exterior body panels and parts. As I mentioned, the new buses will arrive in time for at least the fall, if not summer. So, while we strive for that 10-year lifecycle of a, cycle of a bus, by fall of '25, one bus that we plan to auction will be 14-years-old, three will be 11-years-old, five will be 10-years-old, and then six will be about nine-and-a-half-years-old. All of these buses that have been identified are of an overall condition where replacement and auction is the prudent choice over repairing and/or continued investment. We will remove the bus radios that have been recently installed, and we will install them, we will remove them from the old buses and install them in the new. And that way, we, we, we won't have to repurchase new radios. So, with that, I'm happy to take any questions that you may have. I know that this is just our first reading, so I very much appreciate your consideration of this item this evening. We reviewed this topic at the December 5th FNO committee meeting, where certain board members did have additional questions. We've provided those materials in an email and board notes to you. So, happy to take any questions you may have at all. Thank you.
Josh, do you have any questions?
I have no questions, thank you.
Saig?
I also have no questions, thank you.
Members Sedu?
Thank you. So, given that this went through FNO, community input was there, what's the normal cycle for replacing a bus? Is it 10 years?
That is our cadence, yeah.
And is it with both companies that the price is going up, or just the one that you have selected?
Thank you for that question. I neglected to mention that these buses have been quoted through the Michigan School Business Officials statewide bus purchasing program. It's a cooperative bid, cooperative, where we can, school districts across the state can build a bus with its components and receive those quotes and pricing. So, with that, the pricing of that program ceases on December 31st, and then it re-ups on January 1st.
For all buses?
Mm-hmm, yeah. That's right, for the program as a whole.
For the program, thanks for that.
That's not always the case, which is why I just recently learned that. Thank you.
Just a quick question. I see these are diesel buses, and I know that in the past, we've talked about the possibility that diesel contributes to asthma and other issues with children. Was any investigation of electric buses made?
Thank you for that question. I'd like to answer your question as well, as more of a, maybe a comprehensive answer as well. So, in my learning in our district, I understand that at times, we have been proponents for propane-fueled buses, we've been proponents at times for gasoline-powered buses, and at times for diesel. And I understand we have had a conversation around electric buses at one time as well. We did not consider for this round, an electric bus purchase. Moving to electric buses would require a significant investment in both the platform for charging, as well as the associated infrastructure for electric utilities to be enhanced, and significant research around the latest developments in electric-powered buses, yellow buses, in terms of range, weather and temperatures, and what the latest technologies may bring for yellow buses. So, at this point in time, we did not invest that time in research for this particular bus purchase. We are, according to our preferred cadence, we are somewhat late in bringing this recommendation. And if that is a, a direction that perhaps this district would like to explore, we are happy to, to take that under consideration and work internally as a team toward that. Thank you for the very thorough answer.
I would add, though, another factor, when we look at the travel and the three tiers that we had, and the time that would it take to recharge the buses, it just wasn't really-
It wouldn't be feasible. Right, okay. Thank you.
We discussed this quite a bit on, at Thursday's meeting, so-
I know you did.
Yeah, it was a great question. We did talk about that as well, so appreciate that. Member Picard?
I do not have any questions, I was there.
Member Ahmed?
I just have a question about the buses that are being replaced. There seem to be quite a variance between the ones that are nine-and-a-half-years-old and the oldest bus. So, I guess like, how do you explain that?
Certainly, thank you for that question. There's a number of factors that go into that consideration. As you noted, there's a wide range of ages. In the materials that were forwarded on to the board members, there's a wide range of mileage on each bus as well. And behind the scenes are service repair histories for each of those buses. Some bodies may be deteriorating, body panels and rust. And surprisingly, with our annual state inspections, buses cannot have rust. It's an interesting thing. But along with that, we do take into consideration all of the elements that are required to pass state inspections on an annual basis of our yellow buses. Those are conducted by the Michigan State Police. As well, I was taking into consideration, typically, we look at maybe a total cost of ownership over the lifespan of a bus. So, diesel buses tend to allow for more miles on an engine. They seem to run longer. But sometimes, the body components do not last as long as some of the materials that are used perhaps on a propane bus. So, it really is also dependent on which buses are assigned to longer routes, or dirt roads, unpaved roads, or just the different types of scenarios in which they are deployed across the district. So, each bus has its own, I don't want to say deterioration, but, but use, and the way that it's used, we, it, of course, is sometimes dependent on the ridership of the bus. Sometimes, the interiors are getting pretty ragged, maybe not on others. So, it's kind of a whole package look at the buses, but also, I would say, as a priority with a financial lens, what is the cost of continuing to repair that bus or make investments in it? Because we all, there's all that balance of having that residual value, where when we go to auction, we want to be sure that we're getting that highest price point proceeds for the bus, too. So, there is an equilibrium to that, yeah. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. If we don't have any more questions, I'm going to call for the vote. So, those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Okay, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Student Services with Mr. Tiskwitz.
Thank you, President Christensen. Tonight, you're being asked to consider, as a first reading, a resolution regarding the district's continued participation in a limited school of choice program for the 2025-26 school year. The board must vote annual, annually, whether to participate in school of choi, in a school of choice program. As a district, we've participated in this program for the last 12 years. For the 2025-26 school year, we are once again recommending a minimum of one seat for kindergarten through 10th grade, with a maximum of 500 seats to enroll in the Plymouth Canton Community School District pursuant to School of Choice Section 105 and 105C of the State School Aid Act. Section 105 of the State School Aid Act allows us to accept students in Wayne County. Section 105C allows us the ability to accept students in counties that are contiguous with Wayne County. If approved, this process will allow for a 30-day advertising period and for a 30-day window to accept applications. This also allows our district to give a preference to those have, that have siblings currently attending under the program. Currently, there are approximately 1,300 students that are attending our district through our school of choice program. With this consideration, you'll see that it's up to 500 students with a minimum of one seat per grade level. By law, we have to enroll at least one student per grade level that we advertise, but we can go up to the 500 total seats. If there are more than 500 applicants, we would conduct a lottery. And I'm happy to take any questions you might have regarding this resolution.
Start with Josh.
I have no questions, but thank you.
Saig?
I also have no questions, thank you.
Members Sedu?
Yeah, could you talk a little bit about the marketing efforts to make sure that this goes broad and families know the tight timeline? Every year, I have families that miss the timeline, and they didn't know about it. So, what's being done?
Yep, so, one of the things that we've done is when, as, throughout this school year, as we have parents contact us regarding our school of choice windows, we've kept a list, and we have about 200 families that are already on that list for the 25-26 school year. So, as soon as, if the board approves it, and, and more so, we will connect with them directly. So, that's one thing that we've done, we haven't done in the past that we're doing, I think we did it last year, but we haven't done, you know, in the course of doing the, the program. So, we take a proactive approach. One of the other things that we're doing is marketing to our, our early childhood families. Many of the families that are in our early child program are not residents of the district. They, because it's tuition-based, they don't have to be. So, we are making an effort to, to reach out to them and let them know that this program may be available in the 25-26 school year.
What about any community centers or places of worship where there could be flyers saying, hey?
Yeah, those are all places-
You're doing all that?
We're doing all that, yeah.
As a part of the Communications and the Marketing Department, we looked at just some of the businesses around where some of our local charters advertise, and we have not taken that effort as Plymouth Canton Schools. So, it's something that we've talked about, could we work with our businesses and local communities, if allowable, to put some advertisement there as well?
Utilizing social media as well.
Thank you. Member Picard?
Okay. I was just concerned with class size. I know we had somebody come last time, there was concern with the class size. And so, is there more openings then for next year? Or how do, do we manage that, like, just to keep, like, in the lower elementary?
Yeah, so, we, we take a look at, you know, class size is something that we were driven by the board in terms of what those guidelines are, and we, you know, stick within those guidelines. At the elementary level, it's typically, you know, looking at the number of sections and where we have the most space for, for students. At the middle school and the high school level, it, it could involve increasing the FTE to, to keep those numbers lower.
So, so do we have, so we have, we have, have we had students that left that has more openings for the 500 then? Is that what?
Yeah, so, last year, for example, we had over 650 applications. We ended up enrolling about 330 of those. And it's, it's, you know, various reasons where, you know, the family doesn't want to commit to travel, you know, variety of different reasons.
Okay.
It is, it's a process and each year, so in terms of the number of sections that we have, it's based on the students that are rolling up. So, the students that stay in the district, they roll up, then we have students that move in over the summer as well. So, we determine early on what our staffing numbers would be, and then you're looking at, really a process of looking at those open seats, but staying within those guidelines. Priority is also keeping neighborhood schools and neighborhood students home. So, where we might have, say, six students that wouldn't justify having a teacher there, but that's their neighborhood school, that might be a space that we could add some schools of choice students, so that the students that belong to the school in terms of residence and neighborhood would be able to have that teacher there. So, sometimes, it actually works to reduce class sizes, but no time would you ever go over. And we're not looking to, say, let's fill all the way up to. So, if a class size is 26, we wouldn't put schools of choice students in a particular section to go fully to 26 either. So, it's just definitely a balance and a dance. Schools of choice students don't get to choose a school, they choose the district. And then we try to work within our current staffing to allocate appropriately across the different schools. Keeping that eye on, on-
And there's a number of factors we use, you know, we look at, you know, again, as Dr. Merritt said, you know, where we have space available, we also look at, you know, the distance they're traveling, you know? We try to put them, you know, I manually place every student, and we look at where they're coming from and where we have space, and, and try to put them in a school that's close. It's not always ideal, depending on the, the school, but that's a part of the process.
Okay, so, we kind of see where we advertise 500, and like you said, this year, we got 330. And each year, we're getting more, you know, we always have gone down. First, we, at one point, we're at 50, like 12 years ago, we moved it up to 250, then 500. So, we've never maximized that number, and I think the earlier that you go out is better as well, because families have choice. And so, they're choosing oftentimes in February where they would like to go to school. So, they'll apply here, or apply to different locations. So, by moving this forward under, it'll be the next, the first meeting in January will be where you're asked to consider, then we'd have that 30 days to advertise, and then that window opens, so we would actually be able to inform people if they are accepted by February and hopefully commit.
So, what happens, like, so like, for like kindergarten, so you don't know how many are going to, you know, be applying in this, in the, when it's that spring?
Yes.
So, do you wait to place those then for the spring?
No, we're, we're required by law, after, after the application period is up, we have to offer placement to them. But we do have the flexibility to say, let's say, if we put, you know, 10 students at a particular school, and their enrollment numbers in kindergarten are up, then we, we may have to reassign those school of choice students to a school that, there's more space.
Okay, all right.
And the other thing is, in conjunction with the school of choice- And the other thing is, in conjunction with the school of choice application process, we also allow our families internally, if they wanted to choose a school within our district, we look at placing those families first. So what we may see is, there may be some openings in some schools that we originally didn't think so because some of our families internally shifted schools.
Oh, okay, alright, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Member Amin?
Thank you, no questions.
Member Westra, did you have any questions about this?
No, I did not.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the next item. Mr. Tiskowitz?
Thank you.
Can you go through that, please?
Yep, thank you. So we are also asking for your consideration as a first read this evening, the recommendation for a non-resident employee choice for the 2025-26 school year. The board has to annually elect whether or not to participate in the non-resident employee program. Essentially, this program allows any staff member the ability to bring their student to the district, regardless of the district where they reside. Currently, there are 89 non-resident employee children that are attending our school district.
Josh, do you have any questions?
I do not, thank you.
Sayeed.
No questions, thank you.
Member Sidhu? Member Westra?
No, thank you.
I have one.
Sure, please, Member.
So are they always placed where the, where the employee is at? Or is it just where there's an opening?
The employee is given a choice, you know, they, it's certainly based on space. But typically, what you'll see is if they're elementary and they're an elementary teacher, they want them to be in their school. As they move on, they, they try to move on to the, where their cohort's going, you know. If they're at field, for example, they're gonna likely go to Liberty. But it all depends. If they're a middle school teacher, sometimes they, they don't want them in the school that they're at, but they just want them in the district. So it's.
The kids don't want to be in the school.
Yeah, exactly, that's, that's true. But no, it is, it is, they're given an option. And again, we look at class sizes, we look at, you know, what the enrollment numbers are. So we try to honor all of them. Sometimes we have to ask for them for an alternative.
Okay, alright, thank you. Member Amin?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to our next section here, we have citizens' comments, and I believe I have one. Natalie Sharp.
Hello, my name's Natalie Sharp. I'm a current edu-staff employee with the district, former PCCS employee and a PCCS grad, Salem. So just to echo on some of the comments they talked about at PCEP earlier, I just wanted to say that I have actually subbed at PCEP and I've had a wonderful experience. I just subbed there early this week and I had like zero behavior issues. And so, very good, yeah. Not gonna name names, but there was another district and I subbed at a school and there were lots of behavior issues. So, really good, that. And also, I subbed at Starkweather and I subbed on their attendance day and the kids were excited about that. So that was just something I just wanted to bring up, that I got to personally see that anyways. So in this book, Good to Great, which is a book about good companies and making them great, they talk about how disciplined people, disciplined thought, and disciplined action allows them from good to great. And what better discipline than self-discipline? And how do you build self-discipline but through self-advocacy and independence? And that's kind of what I want to talk to you about. And then another great book that I think everyone should read is called The Anxious Generation. And the premise of that book is that children are under-protected in the online world and over-protected in the real world. And I'm gonna focus on that part, the over-protected in the real world. Personally, I've noticed that since when I was a kid, it seems like kids these days are more over-protected, not just in school, but out of school. And everywhere I go, it seems like I had a lot more independence and I'm not even that old. And I think that that is one thing our schools could work on. And I just want you guys to think about that at PCCS, about ways to build student independence, self-advocacy, and for them to like stand up for themselves and take control of their education instead of having the parents and teachers do all the work. Of course, they are great and we should still rely on them, but having the students be in more in control, especially in special education. I think a lot of times, the default in special ed, some of the self-contained rooms, is for the parents and teachers to jump in. And sometimes it is needed and granted, but sometimes just let the students work for themselves. And, see, I just want you guys to think about that. And one of the great ways to incorporate that is biking and walking. More kids biking and walking to school is a great way to encourage more self-advocacy, more independence, and more kids just taking control of their education. If we promote more kids biking and walking to school, then they will be taking control of their education and not relying on their parents or other people to drive them and transport them to school. So just wanted to bring that to your attention and just have you guys think about this. Yeah, I really do appreciate this district. Like I said, I am a substitute. I have been in every building in the PCCS district, including our post-secondary programs, Madonna and Goals. I've served as a secretary and teacher, para-pro, everything from special ed to gifted. And so I definitely do appreciate everything you guys are doing. I just want you guys to think about how you can make our district from good to great and make it better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to action items and discussion. We do have one item here, so this is action item number 25-12-41. Consider approval of a resolution of support Protect MI Kids bill package to address the lack of effective statewide tobacco prevention policies. This is a final reading, can I have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution of support Protect Michigan Kids bill package to address the lack of effective statewide tobacco prevention policies. Final reading, action item number 25-12-41.
Second.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. It was moved by Members Sidhu and seconded by Secretary Westra. We did discuss this last week and we talked a little bit about the language that we can add to that. Josh did share some of that language and we did add that to the resolution. So normally, I don't know that we would open this up for a discussion as a final reading, but there have been some tweaks since last time. So I would love to hear any commentary from any of the board members or even our student co-chairs at this time. Josh, can I start with you, perhaps?
Sure. I had the opportunity to read over the added language and I didn't see anything wrong with it, so.
Okay, great. Sayeed?
Um, I have nothing to add, this looks great to me.
Thanks. Members Sidhu?
Thank you for, I was not here at the last meeting, but thanks for continuing the discussion. I have a quick update with regard to where we are.
Yes.
So on December 5th, the Senate bills 651 to 654 did pass through the Senate. Now they move on to the House. And I want to thank Senator Sam Singh for leading this effort. That he's the one I talked to in Lansing, who was spearheading this to make sure that we keep our kids safe. And given the rise of tobacco and vaping product use among young people, this is needed. And I will just share one other thing with you. Michigan is one of only 10 states that doesn't require a retailer to have a license to sell tobacco, making the state an outlier. So this really puts us at par with the majority of the states in doing the work that we need to do.
Thank you for that update. Member Westra?
Just a procedural question. I'm wondering, since we changed the language, if we need to reread it into the record?
That's a, that's a great question, we can. Do you want to volunteer to reread it?
Can we go round robin? I don't want to read the whole thing.
We can, we can totally do popcorn. Why don't we continue the questioning and then we'll finish up with doing each section, reading aloud. Okay.
Amy? Well, I'm still concerned about the whole resolution thing. You know how we're gonna do it because we already have a resolution, a couple of them on there. And as of January, there will only be two board members, present board members, on those resolutions. And so are we gonna archive them or are we gonna, we vote on them? Or, like, how are we handling resolutions? Because I kind of feel like that kind of takes us out of our lane a little bit because we do have a, we already do have a policy on this. And, you know, as, another policy that we didn't, we took away because there was no vote, which we could have had, similar to a policy we have even on the abortion one, that that's something that would be a concern for health for kids. And then also, we also have a policy that allows us to cause, you know, the same kind of, same kind of things that lists on here that are potential harm effects for kids. We have a policy that allows kids to be hidden from their parents on transgender. And if they go through those processes, a lot of those pre-puberty drugs and that also cause the same kind of harms, brain development and all, can affect those kind of things. So I know this is just specific to this, but it seems like we kind of contradict some of the, you know, we was pick and choose what we're, what we're worried about. But different things can affect kids and there's different, so I, I still have a problem with the whole resolution. A lot of those ones out there on there, you can't even see the signatures. So it could appear that we all stand on that. But if, if this does, if we did something, I would like to see whether names are listed and printed out so that you can tell.
So may I interject? Yeah, so I think at a later workshop, we can talk about the process of historically how we're presenting the board resolutions. But as, as a team of seven plus the superintendent, eight, we have differing opinions. We vote on these resolutions. And when the majority votes, we, as a unified board, support it. So historically, those have had board support, so that is why they're posted on our website. But I am happy to lift that conversation, I think during a workshop setting. But, you know, that's how the board would operate. Okay? Great. Member Amin?
I have no questions.
Okay, alright, are we ready to do some popcorn reading? Alright, we have.
Sorry, yes.
Alright. Josh and Sayeed, I would like to include you if you can see it from here, is that okay? So we'll go section by section. Each person will just read the, each paragraph, if that's okay.
Okay, thank you.
So Josh, you wanna kick us off?
Sure. Do I read the top part first?
Sure.
Resolution of support of Protect MI Kids bill package in Michigan Legislature to add, to address the lack of effective statewide tobacco prevention policies. Whereas tobacco use is the leading cause of preventable disease, disability, and death in Michigan. Tobacco kills more than 16,200 Michiganders annually, more than AIDS, alcohol, car accidents, illegal drugs, murders, and suicides combined. And.
Whereas Michigan is one of 12 states that make up Tobacco Nation, where the smoking prevalence is higher compared to the rest of the country. Tobacco costs Michigan over $5.33 billion in healthcare expenditures and $11.5 billion in lost productivity each year and.
Whereas flavored tobacco increases youth usage. In 2023, 90.3% of high school students and 87.1% of middle school students who use e-cigarettes reported using flavored e-cigarette. Youth who vape use the product because they come in flavors I like, quote unquote.
Whereas historically, cigarette companies have disproportionately marketed menthol products in predominantly black communities by using culturally tailored advertising images and messages. 85% of African-American adult smokers use menthol products. This is three times the rate of menthol use among white adult smokers, worsening tobacco-related health disparities. And.
Whereas Michigan state law prohibits local governments from enacting policies that regulate the sale of tobacco and nicotine products and require tobacco retailer licensure, preventing local communities from protecting kids' health. And.
I'm just gonna pass.
Go ahead.
Whereas Senate Bill 647 restores local control and repeals state law prohibiting.
Is that the right spot? Yeah, you're in the right spot.
Prohibiting local governments from enacting ordinances and regulations pertaining to the sale or licensure of tobacco products, allowing localities to pass stronger tobacco control measures. And.
Back to Josh.
Whereas Senate Bill 648 proposes to establish a new tax on e-cigarettes and increase taxes on cigarettes and other tobacco products. Mind the long one?
You're good.
Alright, with revenue generated dedicated to tobacco prevention and cessation programs and enforcement of tax and smoke-free air laws aligning with evidence-based strategies to reduce tobacco use, especially among youth. And.
Whereas Senate Bill 649 and 650 aim to prohibit the sale of flavored tobacco products, including flavored e-cigarettes and menthol-flavored cigarettes, recognizing the significant role flavors play in driving tobacco-related inequities and youth initiation. And.
Whereas Senate Bills 651 and 652 establishes a statewide tobacco retail licensing program, requiring all establishments selling nicotine or tobacco products to obtain a license, improving compliance with existing tobacco sales regulations, and reducing youth initiation to nicotine. And.
Whereas Senate Bills 653 and 654 repeal provisions in the Youth Tobacco Act that impose civil and criminal penalties on minors for purchasing, using, or possessing tobacco products.
Whereas vaping and tobacco poses significant health risks for teenagers as their bodies and brains are still developing. Nicotine, a primary ingredient in most e-cigarettes, can interfere with brain development, leading to potential long-term effects on attention, learning, mood regulation, and impulse control. Teenagers who vape are also at increased, at increased risk for addiction as nicotine can create a dependency in the brain, in the developing brain. Additionally, studies show that vaping can harm the lungs, causing irritation and inflammation, and may increase the risk of respiratory issues such as coughing, wheezing, and shortness of breath. There is also evidence linking vaping to an elevated risk of cardiovascular problems, such as an increased risk for heart attacks, as it can raise heart rate and blood pressure. Beyond nicotine, many e-cigarette liquids contain harmful chemicals, some of which are known to be toxic when inhaled. The risks associated with vaping are serious, especially for adolescents, whose health and development are particularly vulnerable. And these bills are key steps into protecting our kids. I'm passing.
Now therefore, be it resolved that the Plymouth Canton Community School District Board of Education supports the Protect Michigan Kids bill package, Senate Bills 647 to 654, and urges the Michigan Senate Committee on Regulatory Affairs begin hearings on these bills as soon as possible.
Be it further resolved that the Plymouth Canton Community School District Board of Education calls on the legislature to swiftly pass these critical bills in their entirety to protect the health and well-being of Michigan residents.
Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the members of the Senate Committee on Regulatory Affairs, the members of the Michigan Senate who represent the Plymouth Canton Community School District, and to the Michigan Association of School Boards.
Thank you very much, that's the resolution in its entirety.
I think Lauren, there's a title in that word, there's like, there's from the bottom paragraph because it says regulator instead of regulatory in that last line. So we probably want to correct that before we.
I'm sorry, which line is that?
Right there. Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah. Yeah, we'll want to correct that. So if we can make that amendment to this, we can still vote on this this evening, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright. Alright, at this time, I am gonna call for the vote. So those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Okay.
I abstain.
Okay, so motion carries four zero. And with one.
Four, one.
Four one abstaining, thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, and then we have follow-up forward questions.
So we actually had no questions from the last meeting. From this meeting, I captured Secretary Westra. Are you wanting the follow-up data around the specific incidents that reference the percentages from the highlights from the high school?
Yes, and also two other things, too. We received this and it says to RSVP to Aaron Lee, but it has no email address. So if you could provide that?
Yes. So that's imitation, is that the networking?
Yes.
Okay, so, okay, yes. That will be.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's a teacher or.
Yes.
Okay, then I can look it up.
If you're in your school email, you can type her name and it will come up.
I will, okay.
First dot, last name, at PCCS, K12.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question I had, and I don't even know if this is possible, the reference that Brian made to the possible percentages of students that have made an attempt or plan for suicide. Is there any way that we can get statistics around that?
Not specific locally to the district, so I think he was trying to say in general.
I know, but I'm asking, is there specific to the district?
No.
Okay. I wasn't sure if that was a privacy.
Yes.
Okay.
Last but not least, before we adjourn, I want to.
I was gonna just ask a quick question.
Oh.
So am I only capturing the one question about the highlights as a follow-up?
Yeah.
Oh, and then I had one more. The committee members, the community committee members, can you share the link on the website? I know some people that want to apply and I just want to make sure that I.
Once we have that up and running, we'll share out that link, yeah?
I thought we had decided we were waiting until January to put it out.
But we talked at FNO, so we, our last communication was January, FNO on Thursday suggested that we do it both. Let's put it out December and put it out again in January. So some people might want to look at it and be aware early when some might shut down and wait to open up until January.
Correct.
Yeah, so do it both. Sorry, I didn't let you know that.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that clarification. But last, before we adjourn, I just want to acknowledge that Ms. Jennifer Voss is in the audience, and welcome you, and we look forward to having you take your seat on our next meeting in January, so welcome. I think that concludes our meeting, so I'm going to adjourn at 9:30 PM. Thank you, everybody.